Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 28th work session of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Yep.
Hetzke?
Hetzke here.
Aiken?
Aiken here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Knauer?
Knauer here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
Weissar?
Here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Prinzing?
Prinzing here.
Gray? Here.
I don't necessarily want to point out the fact that our counselor didn't say Weissar here.
I apologize. I was throwing for a loop because I was trying to get into the Google Drive and...
Normally, he's the I dotter and the T crosser, and I'm starting to question now. Anyway...
Weissar here.
Do we need outside counsel? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think we need that. We have minutes from August 10th. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them, and can we...
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Doug, would you like to go through the tabled applications?
Yep. So, our first tabled application is 1676 Penfield Road. It's a Flower City Arcade expansion. On Friday, September 8th, the applicant submitted a revised site plan done by their surveyor. The revised site plan does show some of the previously unpermitted work that was completed by the applicant. They've since come in for permits for that work, as well as a parking lot change, but does not provide substantial changes based on the previous PRC memo that staff put out or the tabling resolution from the planning board. We have sent them a rather detailed list of items, of things that need to be taken into consideration and accounted for as part of a site plan, including hiring a professional engineer to be able to do the site design, especially around grading and stormwater. Hopefully, we'll hear back something soon on that, but just wanted to give you guys an update on that.
So, is it almost as if there's a one step forward, two steps back kind of thing a little bit, or...
A little bit. A big issue's just been scope creep. The original, what was originally applied for and what the work that is currently under review keep changing.
Significant change.
You know, the garage was previously to be torn down, is currently being used, may be used during construction, may not be removed, is still being shown as being removed. The uses, they were previously got a conditional use permit for the front building for a specific use. They're coming in potentially looking at changing that use in the front building. The parking lot layout keeps changing, and each iteration has to be re-reviewed to make sure it's meeting turnaround requirements and fire access requirements. Some additional work was done on the site, which required an alteration to the site plan because they added a patio space in what was previously shown to be parking. So, we're hoping that as part of working with somebody who does site design, they can come up with a concept or a plan that works for them, works for their business, and that they can set without having to do significant changes.
Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, they did secure a lease on some of the parking from Speedy's Plaza?
Yes. As far as I'm aware, they do have a signed agreement. I don't know if that's been filed and is in force, but they did have an agreement, signed agreement with Speedy's Plaza for 32 spaces.
For long-term?
For, I believe it's a three-year agreement, but I can go back and check the numbers.
Okay. Is there's people living in that front house?
Not right now.
No?
I thought he was.
They're going to. Initially, the plan was two apartments and an art studio space. I believe it's changing to one apartment and an art studio space and potentially another tenant space. I'm not sure on that. They haven't come back to the zoning board to change their conditional use permit, but I do know it's under, it's still under construction based on the previous approval, but no temporary final C of O has been granted on the building.
He's still operating the arcade presently?
They're still operating the arcade.
I gotta get over there. I haven't been there for a while. Check it out anyways.
So, we should probably continue.
Continue to table and encourage them to get a professional engineer.
Engineer.
I would think that for the length of time this taking and the screwing around, they'd be better off in the long run, just doing it.
When they originally applied, the scope of work that they were looking at, working with a surveyor was appropriate, but as things keep changing and the scope of work keeps growing, they're starting to get outside of the professional bounds of a surveyor's work, and they're really into engineering work.
Okay. I'll make the motion to continue table. Tidings?
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Our second tabled application, 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the Chick-fil-A. We have not heard anything from the applicant since their last request to table prior to the canceled September meeting, so at this point, no action is required on the board.
We want to continue table or just do nothing with this?
You could take no action, or if there was something you wanted to add, you could make a motion to continue table.
Okay. I guess we'll take no action.
And then, tabled application number three, 2222, Penfield Road, the K-9 Pet Resort. Since their last meeting, the applicant has provided field sound studies, videos from other locations, as well as information or background on each of the videos, information on the security system, spec sheets for the materials to be used in the renovation, and responses to comments. One question that did come up in a dialogue between staff and the applicant was the handling of waste. One of staff's initial comments was regarding a dumpster enclosure. The previous building had dumpsters, but no enclosure. They've stated that they're going to use a couple of residential-style 95-gallon toters. That would be sufficient for their needs. And in discussions, they've determined to keep the toters inside the building until Waste Day, and then they'll bring them out. So, they'll be stored inside the building.
So, like in a little room that's just that, and then somebody holds their breath while they go in and do that, or how does that work, I wonder?
Didn't they testify that waste from the pets was handled independently of waste from the operation of the facility?
That would be a clarifying question we can ask the applicant.
I believe they, we can go back and look at the testimony, but I believe that's what they said, and I believe they said that they have somebody come two or three times a week
to gather...
To clean it.
To clean it and remove it from the premises.
Can we get a, maybe...
Do you want me to move over?
Yeah, where do we, either next to Jim or...
There's a nice chair in the back there.
Let me grab that one over at this one.
Here, let me get this out.
Divide and conquer.
Yep.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening. As to that particular question, everything that Doug said is exactly as I understand it, in that the waste will be, general waste will be contained in toters, which will be held inside the building. The medical waste, not medical waste, but the dog waste, as I understand it, will be removed separately a couple, three times a week as is necessary.
It could be medical. There could be some medicines involved.
There could be.
So, I guess, describe that. I mean, it's what, up to 80 or 100 dogs?
Yeah, we estimate it around 90 dogs. So, anytime there's excrement, it's individually picked up and bagged and then disposed of, and then we'll have somebody come and pick it up a few times a week. As for who, I'm not sure yet.
Okay. But in the, so it's stored for maybe two days?
Yeah.
But there's always, I mean, one or two-day supply?
Yeah.
If that's what you call it.
There's definitely a little...
For all the kids to put in paper bags and, you know, light it on fire on people's front porch.
Yeah. The door's open for mischief night?
I'm assuming you pick it up with the, when your walking dogs, dog owners pick up with the plastic bags, tie it off, so that it's not just, like, sitting there.
Right. It's just not exposed.
Yeah.
So, you're saying the pickup position is still open?
Yes, absolutely. I'm guessing that's going to be mine for a while. I'm used to it with my own. But then, what I was thinking was, we would have a separate room. We have plenty of square feet, and we don't need, this is more an architect's question, we can tell them what we need and where we'd like it in the building, and maybe have outside access to the deck with a double door or something like that, and then roll them out as needed. So, to your point of the separate waste containers, you know, that's in its own room with outside access, but it's closed off, so there's no odor, and then we roll it out when the people come pick it up.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, everybody's seen those videos and...
I couldn't get the Google Drive today. I'd actually asked for some of the documentation. I was just interested in the sound studies and the, maybe they could elaborate on the sound studies and the sound testing that was done, since I couldn't get the Google Drive earlier.
You have, you may want to, may want to just pull it up, but the sound studies that are done, you may want to explain the methodology that...
Yeah, this is a little bit of my pay grade, but we did...
Your applicant correspondence folder.
We did provide two sound studies. Give me one sec while I get this open. One from the Hamilton site and one from Arizona. And they were, sound info.
We had a consultant as well who...
We did.
Who reviewed, who reviewed all of our data and everything else, and the basic fundamental is that we're at a level which is around the, certainly the ambient noise level, but normally what you would expect as a household noise level, not anything substantially more than that. I think we have talked about this previously. The fencing, which is around the site, the Buff Tech fencing, is a sound-absorbing fence, and that actually mitigates a lot of the, a lot of the sound that would, that would happen. We've, you know, the typical dog barking would be at the 75 to 80 decibel range, but as we, as we have the fencing and the other techniques that we have and the distance that we have to our other, what they call sensory areas, you know, that, that noise is nothing more than you'd expect from a regular office.
Yep, that's correct. And so, for example, the, the Hamilton study, they measured 18 barks using the fast A-weighted response and the sound level meter, and the results averaged 63 decibels 75 feet from the fence. Now, it is my understanding that Hamilton has a vinyl fence and doesn't have the Buff Tech fence, and the Buff Tech fence will absorb about 15 decibels of that. So, we're left with just under 50 decibels, and if you're like me, you don't know what that is, let me open up the other one.
50 decibels is about...
Lower than a talking level.
Yeah.
Yeah, it drops off pretty quickly. So, so that was from the Hamilton sound study.
I mean, basically, what we have is, you have the evolution of a lot of uses. Like, you have the evolution of, of mobile homes to manufactured homes to what was trailers and then manufactured homes. You know, things have gotten better. Self-storage units have gotten better. In the same way, the technology relative to these facilities has gotten a lot better. So, even, even something which is three or four years old is not quite going to have what this has. There's an understanding that there needs to be sensitivity to sound and to visual and everything else. So, to that extent, the technology keeps on improving.
AJ, is that based on a six-foot fence or the eight-foot fence?
That was, number was based on the eight-foot fence. The six-foot fence would block about 12 decibels. So, that's not even a, and Jim, you can probably speak to this better than I can, but that's not even a noticeable...
Oh, I will. When you're done, AJ, I'll...
So, that'd be about 20%?
Yeah.
15 down to 12?
There's, there's some definite benefit to having the eight-foot high fence. I don't want to minimize that. I mean, we're in front of the zoning board to do that. Visual, aesthetic, control of the, of the dogs themselves and everything else, and there is an impact on sound, but it's not a substantial impact when you try to quantify that. But there's a real benefit to, to having that, that fencer.
Yeah, it's mostly a safety issue because a dog can jump up and get over a six-foot fence, whereas an eight-foot fence, they can't. We do have, it's like a safety netting that sticks out on the inside of the fence, almost like a barbwire would.
Sure.
You know, the same kind of principle. So, if the eight-foot fence isn't approved, we can do that, but, yeah, so...
Have you seen the sandlot? Have you seen that? That dog can jump...
That dog can jump.
12 feet.
Yeah.
But you don't want to encourage the dogs either. If you have a netting and they see a six-foot fence, they may be inclined to try.
Exactly.
You know, you don't necessarily want to encourage that.
Will that pond at the back end, will that be part of your property now or part of the...
On the back side, I believe that is not ours. Let me get a, if I could see an aerial view.
It's in between the two, right?
Yeah. Let me grab the site plan.
Well, we're going to be under lease on the site, right?
Yeah, we will be.
There's approximately three ponds. There's about three ponds that are split between, because this was originally part of a three-lot subdivision, 12, 2218, 2222, and then 2226, and actually, I think 2214. We're all part of, it was called the Pebble Creek subdivision. So, most of the ponds are shared between them. I believe at least three of the lots are owned by a single entity that has the majority of the ponds on them.
So, who will be responsible for maintaining that?
Landlord.
Our property owner.
Okay.
Who's a master developer. I think the Rochester Regional Health Facility in the front's also a lease.
Yes, it is.
If I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Okay, so there's contiguous ownership of those two parcels, which are two of the major, major users.
Common area maintenance in the lease is, is under the landlord's responsibilities.
Jim, you had, wanted to make a couple comments?
Yeah, so, you know, as we discussed the last time you were before the board, the issue here is really satisfying the noise pollution standard. So, we've had some experience with this, with, with other projects, projects that have a tendency to generate noise. People assume that the noise is going to carry to their property and become a nuisance to them. So, in this case, I went back to look at some of our, our own project files, and I, and I came upon the study that was actually done by Purdue University. So, they, they engaged some acoustic measurement firms, and they actually went to a bunch of dog kennels, and this is what they found. A single dog, a bark from a single dog can reach 100 decibels. Recorded range from a kennel was between 85 and 122 decibels. But, you know, I think to the extent that we're trying to establish a record for the public record, that's at the source and not at the location where people could be nuisanced by a noise. So, normally, if this was an industrial site, we would probably ask you to hire an acoustic consultant to go into the community in the immediate vicinity and establish actual ambient noise levels, all different times of day and night, different days of the week, so we actually know what that is. But in this particular case, ambient noise levels are almost always found to be in that 70 dB range. It is what it is. And sound dissipates as it travels a distance. So, you know, even if you took, you know, a range in here and say, you know, the range that I gave AJ today was 112, well, by the time you take the reduction due to the fence, assuming the fence was installed correctly, and the dissipation of the source of the noise from its origin to the neighboring properties, and couple that with the ambient background noise, it's probably pretty reasonable to assume that the noise generated by the dogs when they're in the exercise yard is probably going to be in that 70 dB range, which is generally accepted to be...
Like that.
...acceptable level of, of noise. And of course, we point out here that the dogs in your facility will not be out at night when the ambient noise level is reduced and people are trying to be quiet. So, I just wanted to get that on the record because I think it's important for people listening here tonight to know that there are other factors at play other than the generation of sound in the yard itself.
Right.
Thank you.
How's staff? Any additional concerns? Everything been satisfied for this?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any other concerns? Bob? Kelly? Okay?
I guess my only, if we were going to, if we were going to talk about conditions, I think one of the conditions should be with respect to the gaps in and around the fencing. Because if you look at the test data that Certainty engaged to do the acoustic test on the panels, it was a single 8x8 panel, and they, they went around with a device that measured air leakage, and then they sealed all those gaps up. So, you know, there's a significant difference in sound transmission in any assembly if you've got gaps in there. So, I think that's, and it's probably to your benefit, just the last thing you want or we want is to have people call up and complain that they're...
Too loud.
Hearing...
Yeah, exactly. I think I said that last time. The last thing that we want to deal with is complaints from the town, neighbors, or anybody.
I have to say, I mean, watching the video of the guy, you know, videotaping all these dogs in this yard, I'm thinking, what, would they put, like, arbituets in their food or something? They were silent. There's a whole, I mean, dogs everywhere. Tons of them.
Yeah, when they're, when they're playing together in the yard, they're usually quiet. They will, when I was there, when we were on the inside, we approached the indoor play area, and when they can see people, they would jump up on the glass and they would get riled up and start barking. But when they're out there by themselves with their, you know, we were a group of people, they're usually quiet. And I, you know, like I said, I think here, that was my same experience at the Penfield Dog Park when I went with my friend who asked me the same question. There's 30, 40 dogs running around, and it's, and it's silent.
Yeah.
So...
So, that's exactly what this study from Purdue found. They also found that there are specific recordings, mostly classical music, that are designed to calm dogs. You can, you can keep this.
No, thank you.
So, you could actually pipe music out there, and that when the dogs, the dogs would get excited when one of the handlers would go out. If they weren't seeing people that they wanted to talk to to ask for whatever it is that they're looking for, they were relatively calm.
And I just experienced that twice, which was my prior experience with any place like this. I went to Adnan, they have a chain-link fence. As soon as I parked the car and got out and the dog saw me, they start making noise. Where I take my dog for training at Dog Works in Victor, they have a chain-link fence with a tarp over it, and there's a hole in it, and the dogs that are out there don't make any noise, but the one that's looking through the hole at me is barking. So, that's why our fence is completely opaque and away from any people activity.
So, we have part two...
Part two, part three AF. Yep.
Ready to go, and a draft approval resolution? So, I'm comfortable. I guess, can somebody make a motion to authorize me to sign the EA F?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
And maybe entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you guys very much.
We have Ritz Carlton coming to Penfield.
I'm excited. I have two dogs.
I figured somebody here would be. I am too, actually. I can't tell you what this means to me. Thank you all. Which is great.
Sure. Good luck.
Thank you for the... I look forward to visiting the zoning board and getting this place going.
Yeah, great. Good luck.
Thank you.
You might want to mention to the ZBA that we encourage the eight-foot fence.
Okay. Somehow or other, maybe, maybe staff can...
If that's something the board really wants to discuss quickly.
Why don't I bring it up here?
I mean, we've done this in the past. If you want to, you want to ask staff to send a memo to the ZBA, letting them know that we encourage the approval of the eight-foot tall fence because of the obvious benefits to this project?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Sounds like what we should do.
Okay. I can do that.
Maybe we make a motion to do that, send that letter?
So moved.
I'll second.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks, Jerry. See ya.
Good seeing you all.
Nice to see you all.
All right, then I have one new business item for you guys, and that is, we sent out a couple weeks ago, the draft 2024 Planning Board meeting dates, that time of the year again. So, we want to get those in and solidified so we can get them on the town calendar for next year.
They're all basically the second and fourth Thursday of the month. Does anybody have any major issues where they would request a change of date?
So, I, I'm not suggesting you change anything, but we're going to be out of the country from the 9th to the 28th of May.
So, you'd miss both May meetings?
I'll miss both, and, and as well, the February 8th. I can send you a note.
Okay. That's this year's.
Sorry. Oh, sorry.
No, it's all good.
Oh, yeah. 2023, nevermind.
So, do we want to, somebody make a motion to approve the calendar for next year? I'll make the motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Anything else for us, Doug?
So, I had for you guys tonight?
All right. Well, I will say that this format, this layout, seems to work pretty well. We may want to, if we have an applicant speak, I guess that worked out okay. Well, I will say that this format, this layout seems to work pretty well. We may want to, if we have an applicant speak, I guess that worked out okay tonight. We may want to come up with a better formal...
Yeah, a lot of times the applicants really want to sit next to their consultants or their attorneys.
Yeah.
Kelly can sit here next to me and we can put them over here.
Yeah.
I did.
But yeah, no, it's, I, overall, I like this for a work session. So thanks, guys, for setting that up. And if there's no more business before us, we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Have a great night.